So, good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Calvert County Board of Commissioners. This time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Weems if he would do the invocation, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Please bow our heads in reflection. Dear Lord, on this spring day, we ask that you continue to bless us, bless our families, our friends, and loved ones today, tomorrow, and always, and let us always remember you. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the liberty and justice of our all.
So, at this time, are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Weems?
I'd like to request a motion to approve and adopt the agenda as submitted, but tabling the matter regarding the Gambling Permit Review Committee. Second?
So, I have a motion to remove the Gambling Permit Review Committee appointment and approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three oh. Thank you. Next on the agenda is our Public Service Announcement, Dr. Polsky, for our weekly update on COVID- nineteen.
Morning, gentlemen. I guess, uh, timing, for better or worse, coincides with the FDA announcement this morning of temporarily suspending use of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. So, just want to let everyone know that on our Health Department website, uh, we have an announcement there regarding, and it may be going up on the county website as well. So, I am, uh, I just typed this up, uh, within the last hour, and I'll read it for everyone's benefit. And again, the information, if you don't catch the details, it's, I'm reading verbatim what is on our website at this point. So, uh, the FDA has placed a hold on Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID vaccinations. The FDA is investigating rare blood clots. These have occurred in less than one in one million people associated with this one particular vaccine. The blood clots have been seen within two weeks of vaccine administration. The blood clots have not been seen with either the Moderna or Pfizer vaccines. At this point, the Calvert County Health Department will only vaccinate people with Moderna and Pfizer vaccines until the FDA includes its investigation of Johnson &amp; Johnson. The Moderna and Pfizer vaccines were developed using completely different technology than the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. Two hundred million doses of Moderna and Pfizer vaccines have been administered in the U.S. without any safety concerns. The Calvert County Health Department strongly encourages people to get vaccinated. We continue to see high rates of COVID spread in our county, along with hospitalizations and deaths from the virus. Currently, those hospitalized in Calvert include people in their forties, fifties, sixties, seventies, and eighties. Recent deaths have included people who range in age from their early forties to their eighties. During the past month, close to one hundred Marylanders have died each week due to COVID infections. Among those who have been vaccinated, we have not seen any hospitalizations or deaths. For those who have recently received the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, the risk to your health is extreme, excuse me, extremely low. Please keep in mind that the blood clots have occurred in less than one in a million people, and it is not clear that the clots are directly related to the vaccine. And so, I'm going to go into a little bit of technical detail, just for a bit. The type of clot seen is called a cerebral venous sinus thrombosis. It occurs in approximately one in two hundred thousand Americans on a yearly basis. This is not a clot specific to a vaccine or anything else. Symptoms include severe headaches that are generally accompanied by vision changes, problems of speech, and sudden onset of muscle weakness in one area, excuse me, one area of the body. These are also symptoms of strokes, and so, anyone with symptoms that are associated with severe headaches and other symptoms should seek medical care immediately. And the Health Department will update as more becomes available. So, I'm going to turn attention to our usually weekly update. As you can see, cases have not really dropped. Over the past week or so, they've remained relatively stable at the fairly high rates that we've seen. By age breakdown, really some mixed news here. Uh, so, among older people, good news, we've seen, uh, cases actually go down over the past couple of weeks. And again, that is a result of the relatively high rates of vaccination among seniors. On the other end of the spectrum, we've seen cases, uh, rise among, uh, those below age twenty. So, the updated positivity rates, and it's each week over the last four, the number of cases are in that middle column. So, we did reach a high, uh, back in that third week of March of about a hundred and ninety cases. This past week, we were at one forty-two, still well above what we were seeing, uh, about two months ago. And the positivity rate is hovering around seven percent. And then, I just updated the chart for this week, so still showing us in, um, high transmission rate in terms of cases and positivity rate, uh, sitting in the moderate. So, this is the, the big chart showing all the doses given per county. Uh, and for the first time, uh, our vaccination rate has actually dipped just barely below the state average for at least one dose. Uh, so, the state average, as you can see by the giant arrow on the right side, is thirty-five point four percent of the population of Maryland. Uh, Calvert County is now thirty-five point two percent, so essentially, we're, we're right there at the state average. We had been, uh, about two full percent above, uh, about two months ago. That was around the time that the mass vaccination sites opened, and doses were shifted away from us locally and over to the mass vaccination sites. For sixty-five plus, uh, I think this shows that for those doses we have had locally, we put them to extremely good use. So, we are in essential tie for second place among the highest percentage of, of those vaccinated, sixty-five and over. Also, want to mention, as far as being good stewards of vaccine, that eighty-nine percent of the vaccines that we have received, we have used for people who live in Calvert County. Now, it's never going to be a hundred percent because there are people who work in local medical practices, first responders, other prioritize teachers who live outside of the county, but we vaccinated here. So, um, you know, essentially keeping ninety percent of the vaccines reserved for those who live in Calvert County. Uh, you know, we are, those that we control locally, we're making sure are getting to the people who need it within our borders. And, uh, because of the continued shift of vaccines away from us and to the mass vac sites, I am going to encourage people, uh, to look outside of our borders to get vaccinated. This week, uh, we are only receiving six hundred doses of vaccine at our local health department. There's still approximately forty thousand Calvert adults who have not been vaccinated at this point. Uh, it's just impossible for our local health department and the private practices here, uh, to make, um, big headway with the amount of vaccine that we're getting. And so, um, information for registering to be vaccinated through the Health Department is on the left side of the screen. I would strongly encourage those who do have the means of traveling outside of the county to get vaccinated to consider going on the Maryland website, the, either calling the eight-five-five M.D. GoVax or getting onto the website, uh, which, again, I'm not going to read it out, but it's on the screen. Uh, or you can go to Maryland Department of Health website, and there's a link from there, uh, to, to find it. I know there's been a question about, uh, for those sixteen and seventeen years old, because the governor has okayed anyone regardless of health, underlying health conditions to get vaccinated. The only vaccine that is approved, FDA-approved, for sixteen and seventeen-year-olds is the one made by Pfizer. We have not gotten any Pfizer, uh, vaccine in months. We only actually got one shipment ever. Uh, and so, the Moderna that we're using is approved for eighteen and up. I will say that, from a physician's standpoint, uh, I cannot see why a sixteen or seventeen-year-old, it would be a worry for them to get vaccinated, but it just, it's not FDA-approved. So officially, we cannot draw sixteen, seventeen-year-olds in. Uh, we've had discussion, discussions with the school administration, and last Friday, uh, Dr. Folsom and I had a web conference with all of the high school coaches and athletic directors, uh, encouraging them, particularly for their athletes, to go outside of county, or, uh, because the mass vac sites almost always have Pfizer vaccine. And periodically, the pharmacies, usually CVS or Walgreens, but there's not a consistency to it, will get doses of Pfizer that can be within the pharmacies in Calvert County. So, I encourage the coaches to, in turn, encourage their athletes and their parents to sign up for vaccination. And, and that really should go for the entire, uh, all, all the students across the, um, our, our local schools. Um, in particular for the athletes, because we continue to see cases pop up on sports teams, and that means that any of the other athletes who are in close contact, then, again, they have to be quarantined, and they can't go to school. Also, if there are any playoffs at the end of the season, uh, if students start with their vaccinations now, the second one is three weeks later with Pfizer, that we fully vaccinated before playoff time hits, and they're not subject to quarantine anymore. Uh, and we have seen, uh, quite a number of colleges already announce that, uh, for any students, uh, in the upcoming fall semester, those colleges will require proof of vaccination prior to, uh, prior to enrollment. So, for those who are seniors, it's probably wise for them to go ahead and just start getting their vaccination now. So, I put the slide back up that shows the pharmacies in, in the county, uh, that are vaccinating, but not all of them are going to have Pfizer, so, um, parents would need to check with them on a regular basis. And for anyone under eighteen, parental consent for vaccination is required. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, you mentioned forty thousand. Is that based on registration or population, how you come up with the forty thousand that need to be vaccinated?
So, we know that about thirty-two thousand people have received at least their first dose. Among Calvert residents, we know there's seventy-two thousand and change who are eighteen and over. I didn't include the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, but for those eighteen and up, so it's, you know, just a little bit of basic math.
Because we know there's a certain population out there that's not going to get the shot, so I didn't know if you factor that in at all.
Yeah, and, and, you know, there's no way for us to know which percentage of people are going to flat-out refuse. And the, the majority of those forty thousand are likely people who are still trying to weigh a decision. And again, I, I get back to, you know, we continue to see, uh, more people hospitalized now, and unfortunately, this past week, we had two deaths. Uh, one person in their fifties and one person in their early eighties, um, who died, uh, from COVID. And again, we have yet to see anyone who has completed their vaccination end up either hospitalized or passing away as a result of the virus.
So, how many people do we currently have in the hospital?
You know, as of yesterday, there were six, and one person who they were investigating, they had done a swab and haven't gotten results back yet.
So, have you tracked how many people have had the normal flu this past winter?
Next and none. Uh, and, and so, um, that's one, I think, one of those aspects of this that we will learn a tremendous amount. Uh, and, and so, clearly, I think it, it shows two things. One, that, um, keeping some distance, not shaking hands, wearing masks, uh, not only decreases the potential for COVID, but probably even more so for the flu. And given that we still saw, you know, a, a significant, uh, transmission of COVID during the winter, shows how much more transmissible COVID is than influenza.
There's a different theory on the street.
Which is?
That a lot of these people that they say have COVID is just the flu.
So, everyone who was tested for COVID was tested for flu. Everyone. Uh, it was a, a package deal. And so, we can say categorically that that is false.
Just...
I, I hear you, and there's, and, and, and on a, on a daily basis, as I'm sure you can appreciate, we deal with all sorts of, of rumors. Uh, and, and again, I would encourage people that, you know, for most people who are watching this, they don't know me personally, that they should talk to their family doctor, their family nurse practitioner, someone who they feel comfortable they develop a relationship with and they can trust. You never, ever know truly who's behind any web post. And, and there are people out there who are malicious, that when you're, and this goes for anything to do with your health, when you're uncertain about something and the consequences of your decision, either going ahead with something or holding back on something, either way, there's consequences for your health, and when we deal with a transmittable disease, uh, others around you, you want to make sure that you're really getting good information and not just because something's printed on a website.
So, the other thing that we hear on the news is about the minority participation in vaccinations. In Calvert, how are we doing with minorities?
We're actually doing extremely well. Um, and, and so, both in the general population age-wise, um, and in sixty-five plus, so we're the only county in state that has fully vaccinated more than half of its seniors, and the percentage of African-Americans and the percentage of the general population have been vaccinated is absolutely equal. In the general population, we're also seeing really good equity. Now, um, those are vaccines that are happening within the county. We can't control, again, what's happening at mass vac sites, and we know there is inequity at the mass vac sites. And, and that's really a lot of grassroots work from the very beginning. Uh, I certainly don't want to take credit through the Health Department. Uh, our community organizations concern Black women and double ACP. Many of our local faith leaders, uh, from the very beginning, Wilson Perrin, uh, men, many of our local leaders from the beginning not only got vaccinated, but were, um, talking to people who they personally know, people in their organizations, uh, to assure that this is the, the wise route to go to get vaccinated.
And Saturday, I attended the clinic at the St. Paul's Church here in French Rite, which was organized by two churches, so to help get the word out.
We were extremely happy to see you there. Um, and...
So, how many people did you vaccinate that day?
Um, we, I, I, I didn't look at the final total. The, we had planned on about three hundred and fifty people. And, um, you know, I, I think that was a wonderful example where we have, uh, a predominantly African-American church and a predominantly white church coming together to, uh, to draw people in, and it was not exclusive to their congregations. And I know that, um, at both those churches, they do considerable work with low-income people, um, people who are disadvantaged for a variety of reasons. And that was really the goal of that clinic, was people who otherwise may not have access to care. Um, that it was a way to, again, through grassroots, people that they trust, uh, to bring them in for vaccination.
And just to reiterate, uh, Dr. Polsky, you know, if you really want a shot, you've got a better chance going outside the county to a mass vaccination site. The governor and the federal government has decided that's the path they want to take, and
Right.
Uh, they're converting those to walk-ups. You don't even have to have an appointment in the very near future, so that's where the allocations are going to go.
And it, it, it really pains us to have to tell people to go outside the county to get their vaccines. We have the capacity to vaccinate more people. We have local practices that have the capacity to vaccinate their own patients, and we're just not getting the doses locally.
And, uh, Dr. Polsky and I have complained on the Thursday conference calls with the governor's office about that process and how it does not help our citizens, making them drive sixty or seventy or eighty miles to get a shot, when we could do it right here, but...
Right, and I, yes, and we both made it clear, and I, I've made it very clear through multiple channels, that to me, mass vac sites are only appropriate when you have saturated your capacity locally. Then, you start to shift doses out, not preferentially treating those mass vaccination sites. So, the, yeah, again, the reality is that for most people who are going to get vaccinated at this point, they're going to have to go outside of county unless the governor shifts his policies.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Polsky. Appreciate your work. So, next item on the agenda is proclamations. Commissioner Weems?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a proclamation. I do not see Mr. Horstman in the gallery. He's not present. Whereas Charles Horstman retired on March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, after dedicating nineteen years of faithful and loyal service to the citizens of Calvert County and the state of Maryland. And whereas Charles's admirable career began with Calvert County government on October tenth, two thousand and one, as a facility coordinator two with Parks and Recreation. On February twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, he was promoted to Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Worker One with Parks and Recreation, where he was again promoted to Parks Maintenance Specialist Two on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, where he served until his retirement. And whereas his service was demonstrated with a spirit of pride and commitment throughout his exemplary career with the Department of Parks and Recreation. In that same spirit, Charles has been honored with the Employee of the Month Award and was a member of multiple Team Excellence Awards throughout his illustrious career. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County presents this proclamation as a tribute to Charles's outstanding accomplishments and hard work during his distinguished career, thereby recognizing this remarkable employee who strives to improve the quality of life for all Calvert County citizens. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the appreciation of all Calvert County citizens is hereby extended to Charles Horstman on his retirement after nineteen years of reliable and commendable public service. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County joins the community and Charles's coworkers, family, and friends in conveying best wishes for a long, healthy, and happy retirement with continued success in all of his future endeavors, given under our hands and seal this thirteenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-one. Congratulations, Charles.
Thank you, Commissioner Weems. Next item is Autism Awareness Month. Commissioner McConkey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD or autism, is the fastest-growing serious developmental disability that results from neurological disorder, hindering a person's ability to communicate, respond to surroundings, effectively problem-solve, and form relationships with others. Autism is referred to as a spectrum disorder because it is characterized in varying, varying degrees by difficulties in social interaction, verbal and non-verbal communications, medical conditions, as well as restricted and repetitive behaviors. Autism can be associated with intellectual disability, difficulties in motor, coordination, and attention, and medical health issues. And autism now affects one in fifty-nine children and individuals, irrespective of race, creed, or social economic status, and not only affects the person with the disorder, but also affects their family, friends, schools, and local communities. And Autism Speaks is a national organization which provides resources for scientific research, grants, education, advocacy, and outreach through volunteers who represent Autism Speaks in their community year-round, assisting with awareness initiatives and family services. And we recognize all the individuals and organizations in Calvert County that provide outreach, service, education, and advocacy, and the important contributions they may have to our local community, families, and individuals affected by autism. Now there be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the month of April, two thousand and twenty-one, be known as Autism Awareness Month in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that we commend all those who are committed to providing outreach, education, advocacy, scientific research, and services to all citizens, including those with developmental disabilities such as autism. We urge all citizens to join us in increasing their awareness and understanding of autism spectrum disorders, given our, under our hands and seal this thirteenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, I, oh, Chris Fenimore has a few words to say.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner McConkey, for reading that. Um, I have to hold this out further and further as I get older. My name is Christine Fenimore, and I work for Calvert County Planning and Zoning. Um, I'm also a mom to a son who is now fifteen, diagnosed on the autism spectrum. I also do, excuse me, community outreach for an organization called Autism Speaks. So, I want to thank you today for this proclamation. There's a couple of local folks that also have some words to speak on. Uh, Kristy Harris with, uh, the Calvert County Public Schools, as well as Dave McDowell with the Sheriff's Office. I do want to, um, just point out that one in fifty-four children are diagnosed on the autism spectrum. And if you've met an individual with autism, you've met one individual with autism. I can speak for my street. We have about twenty-four to twenty-six houses. There are three boys, all in high school now, diagnosed with autism that I know about. That tells you something about our small little cul-de-sac in St. Leonard, Maryland. So, thank you again for bringing awareness to Calvert County. We've been doing this proclamation since two thousand and thirteen. It's been amazing. I've worked with the Sheriff's Office. I've worked with the school system. But I'm, I'm one person. There are several other volunteers that do work in Calvert County, and they're service providers, um, including Calvert County themselves with therapeutic services through Parks and Recreation, the Autism Project. And if any of you, uh, are in the south end of the county at night, I encourage you to go by the Marine Museum and check out the Drum Point Lighthouse. It is lit up blue for the entire month of April. Thank you again. Um, I'm going to introduce Kristy Harris, who is with the Special Education Department for Calvert County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Kristy Harris, Director of Special Education with Calvert County Public Schools. Thank you, first of all, for this autism proclamation. It's really important that we promote awareness of autism. In Calvert County Public Schools, we educate many children who have a disability of autism. We educate children who have IEPs for special education services. We have children with five oh four plans who have accommodations. We also have many students who don't need either of these plans, and they're very successful in those general ed environments without a legal document. So, just to give you an idea of some of the numbers, for special education for students with IEPs in Calvert County Public Schools, our official count for October, two thousand and twenty, was one hundred and ninety-eight students with IEPs. That is twelve point three percent of our total population of students with IEPs. That does not include our children who are birth-to-three, who we service, who have developmental delays. Many of those children do also have a diagnosis of autism, or later will be diagnosed with autism. And we probably have about two hundred and fifty children who we serve from birth to three. I would definitely encourage any parents or caregivers who are concerned about their child's development to contact the Infants and Toddlers Program for Calvert County or the Child Fine Program. All of the information is indicated on our Calvert County Public Schools website. In Calvert County Public Schools, we do offer a variety of services and supports. So, we also offer evaluations. The early intervention is most important, and of course, school-aged children, families who are concerned, should work with their schools. Um, as far as Calvert County Public Schools, we are definitely vested in supporting the needs of all of our students, especially our students with disabilities and our students with autism. This past year has been especially challenging, given the COVID- nineteen pandemic, all of the changing service delivery models, and it's been especially hard for our children with disabilities, our families of children with disabilities, and especially for our children with autism, because there have been so many changes, so many things that are out of the ordinary. So, we are looking forward as we're gradually resuming some sense of normalcy. Um, and we just want to say thank you for your support for all of our students in Calvert County Public Schools, including our students with disabilities and our children with autism, and thanks again for this awareness proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Colonel McDowell has a word, a few words to speak?
Good morning. Lieutenant Colonel Dave McDowell with the Sheriff's Office. I just wanted to take an opportunity to share with the public something that, uh, that we launched at the Sheriff's Office on April second. A friend of mine came to me whose son is affected by autism, and her concern is that he, he now drives, and that she feared for his safety... he, he now drives, and that she feared for his safety if he has an encounter with law enforcement, because some of the things, the bright lights of the car, the flashlights in the windows could, could trigger a response from him. So, um, basically, the recommendation that she made was, was very easy to put into place, and it's, uh, it came to fruition last week. We have stickers now that we give out at the Sheriff's Office, and we can, I guess, put this on the county's, uh, page so the public can see it easier than what I'm holding up here. But these stickers will go in the back left corner window of a vehicle. Um, they're easily removable, and when an officer stops that car, as they approach it, they'll know from that sticker that somebody in that vehicle may be affected by autism. And it just gives them some tools, and extra tools, as they approach that vehicle to cope with the situation that, that they're facing. And it also hopefully will help the driver or passenger to know that, that sticker is there, and that the officer will see it and allay some of their anxiety. So if you're interested in a sticker, you can contact the Calver County Sheriff's Office. We also have forms there where you can voluntarily give us information about whomever in your home is affected by autism, so we have more additional information on board as we respond to your house for a situation. Um, and it's, it's just another way of us reaching out to every, every aspect of our community, try to make a difference.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Um, who gets this proclamation? Yeah.
We'll, we'll send, we'll send Chris Fenimore.
Okay.
Mark Willis County Administrator, I'd, I'd like to take, uh, this opportunity to stay out of trouble with my daughter in California, because, uh, I have an autistic grandson. And it's interesting, because the work that the Sheriff's Office does is actually ahead of, uh, California i- in many aspects when it comes to identifiable, uh, you know, autism awareness, and that's what this is about. So autism awareness with the Sheriff's Office keeps, will help in advance of that traffic stop. But also just in general, uh, you know, I, I have a degree in psychology with a background in early childhood development, and I can tell you that when I got my degree, we did not talk about autism the way that we talk about it today. And they will tell you that a couple decades ago, that, uh, i- it wasn't autism. You just had a hyperactive child or a very reclusive child, and that's, you know, what most folks don't realize is that you don't really outgrow autism. You learn to adjust to it, and children are going to be influenced by the environment that they're in. So the more education that's out there, the better they do later in life. And like we mentioned, they, they can drive, they can hold jobs, they can do all these things. So I also get out of trouble, because Chris has given my granddaughter a, uh, a nice pair of socks here, which if, if you see the, uh, the puzzle pieces, always think autism. So appreciate the work that the Sheriff's Office is doing, and I certainly appreciate the support that we, the county, give our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to say on behalf of the Commissioners, I want to thank all of you for the work that you do in helping these young children become adults and contributing to our community. So, uh, again, thank you for what you do. I guess we're going to take a picture?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. Sorry, I don't want to do anything unless we see. Thank you for what you do. So the next item on the agenda under appointments is Girl Scout Leader Awareness Month. So, uh, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas April is recognized as National Volunteer Month in the United States, and whereas Calver County has approximately four hundred and thirteen adult women and men currently serving as Girl Scout volunteers, both as troop leaders and in many other vital volunteer roles. Without these individuals, Calver County Girl Scouts from ages five to eighteen would not have the opportunity to discover their own capabilities, take action in leadership roles, learn entrepreneurial skills, explore science, technology, engineering, and math, STEM fields, engage in a love of the outdoors, and many other skill-building opportunities. And whereas in the past challenging year, Girl Scout volunteers have consistently found new ways to engage girls through virtual meetings and safer in-person gatherings when possible, modeling versatility and adaptability in the face of changes beyond our control. They have kept the Girl Scout spirit strong and continue to make life-changing contributions to the young lives of Calver County girls. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one be known as Girl Scout Leaders' Day in honor of all Girl Scout adult volunteers working in partnership to mentor the Girl Scouts of our community. Be it further proclaimed that by this action, we express our faith in the ability of today's girls and young women to enrich our community and make the world a better place. Given on our hands and seal this thirteenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-one, signed by all five Commissioners. Just want to thank all those volunteers out there that work with these young ladies to help them grow into great contributing adults. And, um, I want to say on behalf of the three of us, we are very unhappy today because of COVID, there's no Girl Scouts in attendance, and we're not getting any cookies. Because normally they come and bring us cookies.
A second, second.
Today, no cookies. So, uh, we should, we should have got special dispensation or something to got some Girl Scouts in here.
Apparently, they don't have our address, because they could be mailed in.
So we do have somebody online to make some comments, so, uh, you can go ahead.
Um, hi, good morning, Commissioners. I will make sure that you guys get some cookies, or how about that?
You just made our day.
Yes. Uh, my name is Winnie Neeny. Um, I am the Association Chair for Calver County Girl Scout. Thank you so much for recognizing the amazing dedicated Girl Scout volunteers of Calver County. Uh, we do have four hundred and thirteen registered adult volunteers, and eighty-three percent of those volunteers returned from last year, exemplifying a long-term commitment of Girl Scouting. Uh, the future is bright, and they are lighting the way, and Girl Scouts rock. Thank you so much, and have an amazing day.
Thank you. And was there someone else? Yes.
Hi, I'm Kelly McDonald. I'm just here with Winnie. So there are two service units in Calver County, and Winnie is in charge of the association that covers all of them, but she is a leader in the southern part, and I'm a leader in the northern part. So we just wanted to make sure we had all of us covered, say thank you very much for all you do to recognize our Girl Scout, and we will make sure you get some cookies.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And we, and honestly, we do appreciate all you do to help make our community a better place. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yes. So the next item on the agenda is, uh, Technology Telecommunications Week, Public Safety, I believe.
That's me.
Commissioner McConkey?
Yep.
Sorry.
Whereas the U.S. Congress and the President of the United States have established the second week of April as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And whereas Calver County Sheriff's Office Communication Operators provide emergency assistance to citizens and public safety responders, and the Sheriff's Office Communications Operators are devoted to customer service excellence and the highest level of professionalism. And Calver County remains proud of our Sheriff's Office Communications Operators for efforts they put forth daily to provide the most critical link to law enforcement and allied agencies for the citizens of Calver County. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the week of April eleventh through the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one be known as Tele- Telecommunicators Week in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County joins our citizens to recognize the contributions these highly trained and dedicated personnel make to our community, given under our hands and seal this thirteenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jessica Jones, Calver County Sheriff's Office. Um, we have six sheriff communications, uh, operators that work twenty-four seven. They're assigned to four patrol squads. Um, I wasn't really prepared to make a speech, but I just want to say they are extremely dedicated. Um, you wouldn't have known that COVID was a pandemic with them. They worked round the clock, um, used very little leave, um, and that's all year-round, uh, always, but I'm really impressed with how they handled, uh, this situation. And I'd just like to thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the work that you do. Lieutenant Colonel McDowell? He's next. He's on the next proclamation.
We just want to make sure we get a picture of that.
Oh, we'll get a picture.
Go ahead.
Now?
We, if we want to do, if we can do them both together, because they're both telecommunicators, so Steve can read the proclamation for public safety. How about that? And then we'll take one big happy picture.
Mr. President, can you hear me? I keep going in and out watching you guys. I just want to make sure you can hear me.
Yes, we do. We got your mic.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Commissioner Weems?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Whereas the U.S. Congress and the President of the United States have established the second week of April as National Public Safety Telecommunication, Telecommunicators Week. And whereas Calver County Public Safety Emergency Communications is the crucial first contact for those in need of emergency assistance, dispatching appropriate public safety providers or responders who may apprehend a criminal, save possessions from a fire or save lives. And whereas emergency communications employees are devoted to customer service excellence and a high level of professionalism. And whereas Calver County remains proud of our emergency communications personnel and the link they provide to fire, rescue, emergency medical services, police, and allied agencies for the citizens of Calver County. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the week of April eleventh through the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one be known as Telecommunicators Week in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County joins our citizens to recognize the contributions these highly trained and dedicated personnel make to our community, given under our hands and seal this thirteenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-one.
Commissioner Stanley Harris, Communications Chief with Emergency Communications. You know, our nine-one-one specialists and the Sheriff's Communications Officers, we are the first first responders. They perform a extremely stressful job, awfully thankless job. Um, uh, officer may go on, we'll say twenty to thirty calls per shift, but our employees go on every call in Calver County, from that first nine-one-one call till the last unit clears the scene. The dedication that they show to the citizens of Calver County is remarkable, and I'm truly honored to work with the group of employees that I work with, and I'm thankful for the job that they do. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to speak again on that, if I may. Lieutenant Colonel Dave McDowell with the Sheriff's Office. Uh, our un- our unseen partners in communications, uh, I, I cannot say enough about what they do. For about thirty years now, I've been on the opposite end of the radio from those people. And, uh, you know, they, like Stanley said, they deal with a higher volume of calls than any other first responder does, but, you know, they may not be on the scene physically, but they are on the scene. They're on the scene mentally. And, uh, so they, they carry a lot of the same baggage that we carry throughout our careers, too. A lot of people don't understand that about what they do. I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
So we do want to thank them for the service they provide. I spent thirty years at Prince Ray Fire Department, and, uh, the information that we get from the dispatchers is vital to the decisions that you make while you're on the ground. Before you arrive, you're already in your head figuring out what's going to happen, and that information that those telecommunicators pass on to us is vital to making sure that we have safe and, uh, safe operations and happy endings. So, uh, want to thank all of you for what you do in telecommunications. So come on up, and we're going to get a picture. So the next item on the agenda is an award from, uh, the ERC Committee. So I think we have Lorraine Joyner online.
Um, good morning, Ashley Commissioners. Um, it's Lisa Tullamy. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Sorry.
No, it's fine. I will be presenting today. Um, how are, how is everybody doing? Good morning.
Wonderful. Doing well. How about you?
Very well, thank you. Um, I am here today representing the Employee Recognition Committee, and it is my privilege to introduce Calver County Government's March, two thousand and twenty-one Employee of the Month. Before I introduce our award winner, here's a quick reminder of what we look for in an Employee of the Month. This award acknowledges individual excellence for superior job performance and/or special individual efforts which make, which exceeds an employee's normal job duties. Some of the suggested criteria are effectiveness of public contact, respect of fellow employees, quality and quantity of work, contributions towards improving organizational morale, and actions that improve our public image. Anybody can nominate a coworker for this award, simply have it signed by the employee's supervisor and department head. Please check out the ERC website, um, on the county internet for more information. We encourage all employees to be on the lookout for worthy recipients. So without further ado, our March, two thousand and twenty-one Employee of the Month is Patricia Trish Hounds. Trish is the Executive Administrative Assistant Two for Public Safety. Um, and some of the words that were said about Trish, uh, were that she is kind, a dedicated employee, she is a jack-of-all-trades, and she wears many hats. Um, she is Executive Administrative Assistant for Public Safety, Safety, as well as False Alarm Reduction Unit Manager, which is essentially two full-time jobs. In addition, Trish is working on side projects with Public Safety. Currently, she is helping with the logistics of the COVID Registration Call Center. In addition to her phenomenal work ethic, she is one of the kindest, most giving people to walk the earth. Coworkers often state, "Trish, stop making us look bad." This is a true reflection of how much better she does at everything. She is never late for work. In fact, she is always at work and ready to begin her day no less than a half an hour early before her work shift begins, many times earlier than that. She will work through her lunch and work late if needed to assist coworkers, supervisors, division chiefs, and department heads, as well as the public. She doesn't know any other way. She puts her heart into her work, her family, her friends, and her life. Trish is not above any job, from answering phones to doing mail runs to unloading pallets. Trish will always help in any way that she can. She also constantly checks on everyone's mental health, um, asking, you know, "How are you guys doing? How are you guys feeling through this challenging year that they've all had?" She just wants to make sure that everybody remembers that they're a part of a team and a family at public safety. You simply will not find anyone in Calver County Government who is a selfless, dedicated, hardworking, and needed friend as Trish Hounds. The ERC is delighted to be a part of this recognition, and we thank this exceptional coworker, Trish, for being a positive support to citizens and coworkers alike, and for making the county more approachable, safer, accessible, and projecting what we all know is that Calver County is the greatest place to work and live. Thank you, Trish, for all you do, and thank you to those who took the time out to nominate Trish. And thank you, Commissioners, for your continued support of the Employee Recognition Committee. And thank you, Commissioners, for your continued support of the Employee Recognition Committee.
At this time, I'd like to ask if Jackie would like to say a few words. Jackie Vaughn, Director of Public Safety.
Thank you, Lisa. Good morning, Commissioners. Jackie Vaughn, Director of Public Safety. As in Trish's nomination, you know, she wears two hats here, both being the person that keeps me straight in Public Safety and also running the False Alarm Reduction Unit, which is a full-time job in itself. But Trish is amazing. She goes above and beyond every day. There's nothing that we haven't asked her to do that she hasn't picked up and done. She'll find things to do, and she's an excellent employee. I'm happy to have her as part of the Public Safety Team. You know, she's got her own parking space now in the parking lot. Once we found out she was being recognized, her fellow employees created Employee of the Month parking space, and they've also given her a sash and a crown there, which is on the table in front of her that she does not want to wear because she's too embarrassed for that. But it is there with her. But we're happy to have her as part of the team. And I'm happy to have all my employees here as part of the Public Safety Team. Thank you.
She better be, she better be careful with her parking spot because these guys over here will steal it in a heartbeat.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Anybody in the conference room would like to say a few words, please?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Barbara Warner, Grant Writer for Public Safety. Today, we recognize Trish. This is long, long overdue. Everything that was said in the nomination is true of Trish. And I was honored to work with Trish when we were in purchasing for many years. And now I'm in Public Safety with Trish, and that was one of the reasons that I moved was because of Trish. I enjoy working with her as a coworker, but more than that, as a friend. So I am honored to be able to present to my friend her award for Employee of the Month, which is well-deserved and well overdue.
And don't forget the big check she gets too. She got that, right?
Yeah, we have kind of a funny story about the check. The envelope came to me, and it was opened without, because I wasn't carefree to work in the day, but it's okay. No, it was handed to Trish, so she's already spent it.
I'm sure.
She actually spent it on her grandson Colton.
There you go. Good deal.
Trish, you have something to say?
I do. I want to thank my Public Safety family for the acknowledgement. And I appreciate everything that they do on a day-to-day basis. They are my family. They're just not my Public Safety Team. They are family. I enjoy coming to work every day and being with everyone that surrounds me. So I appreciate the ERC also for, you know, getting the nomination and choosing me. So, thank you.
Well, we appreciate you still working now that your husband's goofing off all day now, being retired.
Here he is.
There he is.
He's not goofing off today. He was, hey, he came to get the check. He didn't know Trish already had it.
He thought the check was coming, right.
I spent it already.
So Trish, we want to congratulate you and thank you for your service to the citizens of Calver County. And you do know by accepting this award, you can't retire for at least the next 15 years, so.
Right, right.
That's in the fine print.
Yes. Thanks to my husband, I can't retire for the next 15 years.
Right, right.
Well, you know, we kind of let him go, but, you know, you we want to keep, so.
I enjoy working for Calver County Government. I was very thankful to have the opportunity to work in the county and be close to my family. So I appreciate that opportunity. So I'm not going anywhere.
We're very happy to have you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. So our next item on the agenda is appointments. Deputy Administrator Vasallo?
Good morning, Commissioners. Linda Vasallo, Deputy County Administrator. You have a couple of appointments this morning. The first one's to the Social Services Advisory Board. You actually have three vacancies. There's a recommendation to appoint Kimberly Cicero, and then there will be advertising for the two remaining vacancies.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second that we appoint Kimberly Cicero to the Social Services Advisory Board. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three oh. Thank you.
All right, and your second appointment this morning is for the Sheriff's Office Pension Plan Board of Trustees. Staff is requesting a motion to appoint Francis Borelli to fill a vacancy. Following this vacancy, there will be one remaining to be filled at a later date.
Are we skipping over appointment item number two?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second that we appoint Francis Borelli to the Sheriff's Office Pension Plan Board of Trustees. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three oh. Thank you. So next on the agenda is the consent. So I'm going to read through these items. Item one, Department of Community Resources, Public Transportation, FY20 CARES Act Grant. Item two, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation, ITB 2021-045, Medical Care Program for Inmates at the Calver County Dentation Center. Item three, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation, ITB 2021-046, Floor Covering Removal and Installation. Item four, Department of Human Resources Local Government Insurance Trust Legit Sponsorship Request. Item five, Department of Human Resources Employees Retirement Savings Plan Amendment Disability Definition. Item six, Department of Human Resources Employees Retirement Savings Plan Amendment Normal Retirement Date Definition. Item seven, Department of Human Resources Sheriff's Office Pension Plan Amendment Service Time calculation. Chair within, well, we don't have to. Sorry. So the public, the consent agenda has been adopted when the agenda was approved. So the next item on the agenda is new business. Item one is Department of Human Resources Health Insurance Plan Policy for Retirees. Commissioner Wiens?
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Melanie, would you like me to read the memo or?
I can read the memo.
Okay. Absolutely. I defer to you, madam.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melanie Woodson, Human Resources Director. The subject of today's memo is the Health Insurance Plan Policy for Retirees Spousal Coverage. Currently, the Health Insurance Plan Policy for Calver County retirees does not provide a subsidy for spouses or dependents. Additionally, employees earn 4% of the approved subsidy each year of service with a vesting beginning at seven years of service. The current maximum subsidy is 75%, and employee is eligible for the full subsidy after 25 years of service. Bolton Partners has provided data regarding implementation of spousal and dependent benefits for retirees, along with several suggested changes that could be made to our employee and retiree plans to mitigate the cost. Their study is attached, and the key findings are as follows. The removal of the Cadillac tax impact from the current calculation saves $98,000. Change vesting to either 10 or 15 years. A projected 40% cost reduction to the post-65 retiree claims based on their view that Medicare rates are grossly overstated. Bringing care-first Medicare rates in line with the experience would increase active and pre-Medicare retiree rates by 6%. By 6%, excuse me. Additional plan design changes could result in further hard dollar savings. The fiscal impact, the impact to the actuarially determined contribution ranges from $1,645,000 to $2,542,000, depending on the scenario and plan design changes chosen. The annual ADC rate is a combination of, one, normal costs for benefits earned during the same fiscal year, and two, unfunded liability payments to backfill any funding shortfall that has occurred over time. Conclusion Recommendation. Staff recommends changing the attached Health Insurance Plan Policy for Calver County Government retirees to expand the county's current retiree insurance subsidy to include retiree spouses and dependents, begin vesting at 10 years and bandit rates. So joining me today is Kevin Binder from Bolton Partners, our actuary, and Tim Hayden from Finance and Budget is also here to answer any of your questions. So the Health Insurance Plan Policy for retirees is basically a policy that was approved by the Board of County Commissioners, I think back in 2016, that prescribes exactly how we provide health insurance to retirees and their dependents. So right now, a retiree can cover their spouse. They can also cover their children, but the county does not subsidize that, the premium. They only subsidize for the retiree. So the Health Insurance Plan Policy does not provide that subsidy for spouses or dependents. The employee earns 4% of the approved subsidy each year of service with vesting beginning at seven years of service. The current maximum subsidy is 75%, and an employee is eligible for the full subsidy after 25 years of service. We currently have 238 retirees enrolled in the county's health insurance plan. 25 of those employees have a spouse, two have children. So this slide shows the findings of the Bolton Study. And Kevin Binder and Tim Hayden are here to ask, answer any questions that you may have about this chart.
So I guess to just reiterate again, we've been through this before, but, you know, you're basing these examples because they're estimates based on your experience with other places and same scenarios.
Well, spouse coverage is going to depend a lot on each jurisdiction. That's one of the reasons why they're, for each of the, scenario one is basically a plan designed of 10-year vesting. Scenario two is a 15-year design, so there's two different plan designs. So then we have a range of those assumptions. So we bracketed our estimates for basically conservative and a less conservative estimate, to give you an idea of just the sensitivity. It's hard to know exactly how many people will really take it. It really depends a lot on what other coverage is available to people. So if you're in an area where there's no, you know, no federal employees, a lot of people might take it. And if you're in an area where there are a lot of people have federal employees, spouses, or other governments with better coverage spouses or something like that, you'll find more people take it. The other, you'll notice there are two lines over there for the, called the employee election rate and retiree election rate. That retiree election rate is for current retirees. This benefit would extend to people who are already retired. It could be somebody retired eight or 10 years. A lot of that will depend on how it's communicated. And I think it will probably change over time as people become more aware of the benefit. But that's also, you know, hard to know, but it's going to be a lower election in general because just less spouses around. So yes, we selected these numbers to sort of bounce by as a, you know, bracket against Melanie and her staff to know if they seem reasonable. They're based on what we see in comparable jurisdictions in the area around here. We do a lot of the state, Maryland. But that being said, you know better than us exactly what's going on on the ground. These assumptions don't seem reasonable. We also assume a higher percentage for sheriffs and general employees, and that's what we always see. Sheriffs tend to have more of a, just more married sheriffs as employees than general employees. So if those seem reasonable, do those ranges and brackets. Currently assume, I think, 50% of employees take the benefit. So.
So that was going to be my question. What is the surrounding counties? What is, how many years till they're invested in, say, St. Mary's or Charles?
St. Mary's, well, Charles is a different kind of a program. Let's talk about St. Mary's first. I think St. Mary's has a 20-year program for the sheriffs. That's a, you know, they're, for sheriffs that they have. For general employees, I think they get the full benefit after about 20 years. But I'm not sure off the top of my head. It used to be 15 years. They tightened it up. Your benefit's a little unusual for the general employees in that it's for the employees that are in it. The employee savings points, they're not really eligible to get the benefit until age 65. That's not true for St. Mary's County. So these people aren't really getting the benefit until they're 65 anyway. You can change that, right, Melanie? It's still 65% of employees. So the sheriffs are pretty comfortable. Charles County is very different. Charles County changed their program to be a defined contribution type arrangement where they give a certain amount of money and stash it away for everybody, for new employees hired after, I don't know, 2015 or 14. Those are the two neighboring jurisdictions, I think. Did a survey for you all, right, the Health and Water Department of all the other jurisdictions?
Yes, we surveyed every other jurisdiction in Maryland and the state of Maryland.
So I don't have it in front of me, but that's my coworkers in the other departments that work. But I'm, as I do the evaluations, I'm aware of the programs.
And we currently are only one of a couple that don't provide a spousal benefit for retirees.
Right, that's correct.
And so the impact of this is post-employment benefits. So it's OPEB.
Yes.
So I guess my question to Melanie the other day, the question was, is it an actual $2.1 million impact annually to OPEB, or how is that calculated?
Okay. Our actual determined contribution is more of a yardstick of measuring stick. Over the years, some years, the county has just put in the pay-go cost a few years. I don't have the exact history in front of me. Then there was a few years we actually did more than the pay-go cost. So it's really more of a recommended contribution, and that's something, you know, I'm doing for several of the counties, looking at what should we be recommending. But basically, the concept is you to put nothing whatsoever in. You have no money set aside. It would be like me just going hand paycheck to paycheck, and then telling my wife I don't retire, and I have no money to retire. So that, the problem you want, if you're making promises to retirees, I think you want to back it up to some extent. You don't want to over contribute in there either because, you know, your other needs. But so that's an estimate. At this point, you're nowhere close to 100% funded. So it's good to put some extra money in, but it's just really a recommendation. And also, you kick the tires in some of the assumptions we're using as well, but it's another topic.
Because I know in the past, my past three years, that OPEB has really changed. Last year it dropped significantly.
Right.
So.
Yeah, what's happened in general with jurisdictions, the last, since I was involved in OPEB and doing this for 15 years or something like that. First of all, in general, you know, to speak more to it, but investment returns have done much better than the assumptions. 6, 7, 8%. It's the assumption, I think, is 7%, but they've been doing more like 8 or 10%. The gangbusters, the stock market, whether that can, is sustainable is another topic. And the other thing which has happened, when I started doing this work for governments in Maryland, I started doing this in 90s when healthcare costs went up 10, 15% a year. Last year, it's, it's, it's ameliorated. And the other thing it's really ameliorated is for the over 65 cost. That's part of the reason I think the premiums are out of line, is the Medicare program has really kicked up over the last 10, 12 years. And so Medicare benefits are very generous, and you're just filling in that what Medicare doesn't pay. So Medicare costs have not increased as fast as other retiree costs. This program is very dependent over 65 for the general employees. That's the only benefit they get. And even for the sheriffs, the benefit is paid. I won't say forever, but for a long time, God willing, you know, all the sheriffs should live a long life. So even if they retire at 55 and get their retiree benefit for 10 years, and it's expensive, then they get, then hopefully they get the benefit in their 25, 30 years. So it's still a bigger cost. So, I know I spoke pretty fast.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I hope that answered your question.
Yes, and if we adopt this today, then it would, there's a transition period, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. You know, for signup. You anticipate this, based on your estimates, it's not going to be 2.1 million the first year. We would assume that it's going to take a little time for people to transition into the program, adopt the benefit, or?
You're referring to the pay-go cost as opposed to the?
Yes.
The pay-go cost, you didn't take that. We assumed those percentages right away. So a lot of that depends on how it's rolled out.
Okay.
Right?
So Bolton's assumption is based on everyone, those individuals taking it right away.
Right.
We plan to implement July 1, and then at that point, the retiree rate sheets will reflect the new rates. So anyone who is currently eligible for health insurance will receive their annual open enrollment paperwork that would include the rates that have the retiree subsidies. And at that point, they would have the opportunity to make a decision for themselves and their family. I would assume that they are all not going to sign up at the exact same time.
I was just in my head trying to calculate the FY22 impact to, that's all. And we do have, Commissioner Wiens, you have a question?
No, sir.
We have Commissioner Hart online. Commissioner Hart, do you have anything to question or anything to add?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, fine.
So I want to thank you guys for.
So I want to thank you guys for, for bringing this up, especially Director Woodson. And sorry, I got an echo here, so please forgive me. This, this was brought to me on the last board by a lot of employees pointing this out. And I went to, I reached out to Lieutenant Colonel Dave McDowell, asking him his experience on this. And he put a lot, a lot of work into this, I, I really can't, can't discount how much Dave McDowell put into the research, how many employees would affect going all the way back. Um, you know, this is the right thing to do, you know, in today's world of all this crazy, you know, uh, everybody always trying to cover themselves, this, this was the right thing to do for the people that work here. And I'm extremely proud of Melanie for, for break, for getting this, uh-oh, did you lose me?
No, we're good.
Okay, I'm extremely proud of Melanie, the work she put in, you know, when, when we talked about this, oh boy, probably about a year ago, you know, as I'm talking, she's like, I'm on it, I'm on it, I got it, I'm getting it closer, I'm getting it closer. And, and I want to thank you guys for, for bringing this up and being open-minded and embracing this. And, um, it's a very proud moment today in Calvert County, it, it's just giving our employees dignity to be able to say, you know what? I don't have to work till I go into a box just because of insurance. And, you know, we know how, how, what a, what a big problem medical insurance is today. So, I, I just want to thank everybody involved, and I can't say enough about how much Dave McDowell and Melanie Woodson really put into this and, and everybody involved, so, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart, so you want to continue on?
So just to touch a little bit on the bandit rates that we're recommending. So, I don't want you to think that we would have an employee with ten years of service getting a hundred percent of the health insurance subsidy, that, that, that's not how, how we're recommending this. So, an employee with ten, a retiree, I should say, with ten years of service would get forty percent of the subsidy, eleven to fifteen, sixty percent, sixteen to twenty, eighty percent, twenty-one to twenty-four, ninety-five percent. In order to be a hundred percent vested, uh, to receive a hundred percent of the subsidy, excuse me, you would have to have twenty-five or more years of service. So the facts are, Calvert County is the only county in Bolton's peer group study that does not provide a subsidy to spouses or dependents. Bolton estimates that the fiscal impact to the ADC, Kevin just talked about that, ranges from one-point-six to two-point-five million depending on the scenario and plan design chosen. What we're recommending that you choose is to change the health insurance plan policy for Calvert County government retirees to include a retire, a retiree subsidy for spouses and eligible dependents. The spouse or dependent subsidy would be equal to the retiree subsidy. We recommend that you begin the vesting at ten years and that you utilize the bandit rates outlined previously. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
All right, I think we're done, thank you. Well, gentlemen, you have before you, uh, a recommendation and two options?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the director's recommendation for the employee healthcare benefit.
Which, which option?
Scenario one.
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, was the, uh, the, starting at the ten-year, I believe?
Yes, uh, she recommended scenario one.
So, okay, that scenario one, please.
Is that the ten-year?
Yes.
Okay.
You begin vesting at ten years.
Yes, the ten, the ten-year vesting, the bandit rates.
I'll second the motion.
So I have a motion in a second that we adopt scenario one for spousal benefits for retirees. Any dis, in a second, any discussion on that motion?
Just, just one point I want to make, um, Commissioner Hart was, um, louting and singing the praises of, um, others. I just want to, for the record, uh, state that, um, we appreciate your efforts on this, Commissioner Hart, uh, as a board.
Thank you, thank you, and you know, and you know, Commissioner, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, it's been, uh, Commissioner Williams, you know, you remember, we, you know, we've, we've kicked this number so many times, haven't we? And, um, we finally got it, I think we're, um, it, it's, it's, it's where it needs to be.
Any other discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed, motion carries four-oh.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Melanie, thank you, gentlemen. Lieutenant Colonel McDowell?
I'm getting, I'm getting all my FaceTime in today, I guess.
Yeah, I see.
Um, commissioners, I would just like to make a couple comments briefly about this. I, I want to thank again Director Woodson and her entire staff for the efforts they put in to bring this, to bring this home today to us. Uh, I want to thank you all for the decision that you made today, and I want to give a little bit of perspective. This hearing today and the action that you took is a moment in time, it's a moment in time. But for the people that it affects, it's a lifetime, it's a lifetime of commitment and service to the citizens of this county. And today you have truly acknowledged that, and on behalf of them and myself, I'd like to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next item on the agenda, new business, item two, uh, Commissioner Wiens.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I believe, uh, Melanie.
Yes, so I'll read the memo.
Please. Good morning.
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 Do you want me to introduce myself now? Oh, okay, good morning, Commissioners, Megan Fleegle, Deputy Director of Human Resources.
And again, I'm Melanie Woodson, Director of Human Resources. Um, the subject of this presentation is the Human Resources Hiring Strategy Overview. Megan Fleegle will be providing the presentation, I'll go ahead and read the memo. In order to best serve the citizens of Calvert County, the Department of Human Resources believes it is imperative to hire the most qualified individuals. In order to attract and retain the most qualified candidates, the talent pool should be broadened. We must periodically evaluate our hiring strategy to determine its effectiveness in attracting and retaining top talent. Discussion, diversity in the workplace refers to a workforce comprised of individuals of varying gender, religion, race, age, ethnicity, sexual orientation, education, and other attributes. Workplace diversity leads to innovation, increased performance, and more productive employees. Our current practices that support diverse hiring include targeted job announcements, diverse interview panels, job-specific behavioral interview questions, student internships, use of diverse workforce images and job postings, utilizing an application management system for reporting and data analysis, and the elimination of personal reference section of the online application. Fiscal impact, no fiscal impact. Conclusion, recommendation, staff recommends the following, continuing with the current best practices that support diverse hiring. Addition of blind hiring techniques to remove all personal identifiers from the online job application. Implement a voluntary self-identification of disability process. Partner with veteran support organizations to recruit transitioning service members.
All right, thank you. And so I think Melanie kind of went over the background in, uh, the memo here, um, and I'll just go ahead and read through that briefly. Um, so in order to best serve the citizens of Calvert County, um, our department believes it's imperative to hire the most qualified individuals. Um, and in order to do that, uh, we need to attract and retain the most qualified candidates, um, we believe our talent pool should be broadened. Um, and we also must periodically evaluate that hiring strategy, um, to determine its effectiveness in attracting and retaining that top talent. Um, currently, um, in order to do that, we have five goals, um, which are to have an equitable recruitment process, uh, remove any barriers in our job descriptions, comply with EEO principles, um, target dissemination of job announcements, and effective training program to develop employees for promotional opportunities. Um, our next slide is current application statistics. So currently, we ask race and gender on the application, so that is, um, what we can track. So you've got the last four years of statistics here, and as we can see, the percentage of minority applicants is actually trending slightly downward, while the percentage of female applicants has been steadily increasing. And it, it may be worth noting here, in two thousand and nineteen, um, in May of two thousand and nineteen is when the county had decided to eliminate the internal-only postings uh, for any jobs that were being advertised, so that was when everything went to the public and to internal candidates as well. So our hiring statistics, um, who was actually hired into the positions, um, shows that the percentage of minority, um, hires is actually trending upwards until two thousand and twenty. Um, the percentage of female hires has also continued to trend upwards, um, over the last four years. So, um, internal promotions, um, statistics show, um, that, again, in May of two thousand and twenty was when we discontinued those internal-only postings. Um, but as of two thousand and twenty, over fifteen percent of our, um, Calvert County promotions were minorities, um, which is a huge increase, um, from four years ago, as you can see on the chart. Um, there are also, um, in two thousand and twenty, where forty-three percent of the promotions were for females. Um, current employment statistics as a whole show that we have just over thirteen hundred employees. Um, two hundred and forty-four are minorities, which is just over eighteen percent. Um, it shows that sixty-five of our employees identify as veterans, which is just, um, just under five percent. And our total female employees is six hundred and nineteen, which is just over forty-six percent. So our Equal Employment Opportunity Plan, this is a little long, but I'll, uh, read it to you here. The Department of Human Resources submits an EEOP utilization report to the Department of Justice in accordance with federal grant requirements. And what that requires us to do is compare our county workforce to relevant labor markets in order to determine the utilization or underutilization, if there's any. Uh, we then review and revise our objectives and steps to achieve them to increase the number of qualified candidates in any of those underutilized categories. Uh, we also are developing a diversity statement based on the EEOP objectives. And so we just wanted to show, this is still in draft form, um, it has not been adopted yet, um, but will be effective once the new code revisions are completed. So at that time, um, this diversity statement would also go on the website as well as any of our job announcements. Um, and that draft statement is that the county is committed to creating and maintaining a workplace in which all employees have an opportunity to participate and contribute to our success and are valued for their skills, experience, and unique perspectives. This commitment is embodied in our policies and practices for our employees and how we serve the community. Um, finally, just a little bit about diversity in the workforce. Um, we know that a diverse workforce refers to an organization that intentionally employs a workforce comprised of individuals of varying gender, religion, race, age, ethnicity, sexual orientation, education, and other attributes. A work, um, excuse me, a workplace that is diverse also leads to innovation, increased performance, and more productive employees. So, um, some of our current practices that support diverse hiring include the following, um, job announcements that are posted and sent to targeted audiences, um, utilization of an online application management system, which for us is using Nioga, elimination of personal references in the online application, uh, utilizing a diverse interview panel, um, standard job-specific behavioral interview questions. Um, we also partner with CMR to ensure public posting images showcase a diverse workforce. Um, we use a position evaluation system that is also gender and ethnically and racially neutral, um, as well as, um, having student internships. So we surveyed all counties in Maryland on their diversity initiatives, eight counties responded. Uh, five of those counties had no diversity initiatives. Two of those counties, uh, Charles and Frederick, have recently hired equity officers. And then Caroline County did share with us that they advertise positions through the National Minority Update. So our recommendation is to continue the current recruitment best practices that we have, that support, uh, support diverse hiring. We would like to add the blind hiring techniques that would remove all personal identifiers from the online job application, um, as well as implementing a voluntary self-identification for disability process, and partnering with veteran support organizations to recruit transitioning service members. That is it, any questions, comments?
So do we need a?
Commissioner Hart, do you have a question?
I have a comment.
Sure.
Oh, yes, sir, um, I like the blind techniques aspect. I think the ultimate goal for any organization, be it government, private industry, is the absolute best qualified candidate for the job. Um, I think we have a tendency in this country to want to put a, uh, a, uh, I don't know the right word I'm looking for here, you got to be so careful not turning anybody's feelings in today's world, but we're, we're always looking to check boxes, you know? And I'm not looking to check any boxes, I'm looking to spend the money of taxpayers the best way possible and to get the most bang for the buck. And I, and I really do want to praise the HR department here. Um, I think if blindness, a blind technique at this, it shouldn't matter where you come from or anything, it's, are you the most qualified for a position? And I really think if the country took that approach, we'd see a better performance. So I, I really like the, uh, the approach of, you know, everybody truly has a shot at the job as long as they're qualified, to me, that should be the only goal here.
Commissioner Wiens?
Thank you, could you hear me?
Yes, we do, we got your mic.
So with that said, uh, Commissioner Hart, I'd like to make a motion to proceed as recommended. Second.
So I have a motion and a second that we adopt the recommendation from the HR discussion, so I, I just have a couple questions. Um, you provided charts that show how we're doing as far as percentages for minority of women, so how are they in the broad perspective? How are we doing currently as far as our percentages of minorities and female highrees?
Specifically for?
Well, just overall, you know, our, yeah, our minorities are sixteen to fourteen percent of our highrees, females are twenty-five to thirty-five percent. How is that in the world? How are we doing?
I don't know that we gathered, um, any data as far as maybe what other counties in Maryland would have, uh, we certainly could look at that. Um, that would be some interesting information to see, um, because, you know, being a, a government entity, you're, you're definitely different than, you know, even just going off of a national average, um, you know, it, all of the, your local numbers would certainly come into play there, I would think, as well. But we can do some digging and get some of that interesting data, which we love looking at, so.
Yeah.
And the number that's most important to us is the percentage that we hire according to the percentage that apply. So, we can only hire who applies for a job.
True.
So the key is to broaden the applicant pool, so we want to see the numbers of applicants in the diverse categories increase, which is why we want to start tracking just a little bit of additional data so that we have, we can bring forth some better metrics to the board in the future. But in my opinion, we have some good practices in place, we're trending in the right direction. And when you look at the applications versus the hires, we definitely are on the right track.
As Commissioner, Commissioner Hart said, you know, it's, it's our responsibility to hire the best qualified people for the positions that we have. So, anything we can do to improve that process, I think is a move in the right direction. That's all I had, any other discussion? Commissioner Hart?
Yes, sir.
You good, any other?
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, uh, so, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so the motion carries four-oh, thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda is a work session with Department of Planning and Zoning, Director Cook. And Commissioner McConkey, if you want to, you can read or not read the memo.
You want me to read it? No?
Okay, we're good.
The boss said I don't have to read it.
I saw her.
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. I was going to walk through the memo and pause at certain places to talk about the individual fees. So, a year ago, the Commissioners approved updates, long overdue updates to the planning and zoning cost of services and fee schedule. And that was adopted through the budget process for the FY two thousand and twenty-one budget. Since the updated fees became effective last year on July first, staff has identified several fees that were omitted from the list and/or were shown incorrectly. While the admitted fees have continued to be charged because they're required by the Calvert County zoning ordinance, staff is proposing to have them adopted as part of the master fee schedule. The changes include correcting the consultant fee for communication tower permits. We had them switched, they should have been nine hundred dollars if you were just submitting a permit and didn't need to go to the Board of Appeals, and sixteen hundred dollars if you needed to go to the Board of Appeals because there are advertising requirements for legal notices, you have to send letters to adjacent property owners. So, we're going to correct that so that, um, they'll be switched. We're also reducing the fee for agricultural land preservation review, there are lots of forms that get submitted. We didn't mean for it to be two hundred dollars a form, it's only twenty dollars a form, so we're going to change that as well. We didn't mean for it to be two hundred dollars a form, it's only twenty dollars a form, so we're gonna change that as well. And then corrections to the critical area mitigation fees in lieu. So there are a lot of, well, let's start with, there's a base fee that you have to pay, and then it changes if you're on steep slopes, if you're in the buffer area, if, um, there's a lot of ifs. If it's a violation, you have to pay additional. If you're going to the Board of Appeals, you have to pay additional. So we've spelled out, we're pro- proposing to spell out each of those fees as required by the state critical area law. So that's really it in a nutshell. Um, we recommend that you discuss, um, ask any questions, and if you're okay with these changes, we will include the revised fee in the county's budget resolution for public hearing and adoption.
Any questions?
Yeah, the, I know the fees for, like, cutting down trees in the, um, in the critical areas, that went up, but that was the state's price that went up, wasn't it?
That's correct. We were doing a pilot program where we had the fees reduced and they weren't covering what we needed it to cover. So, you know, at, after discussions with the Critical Area Commission, we did raise that back to their fee, their base fee.
And how is that determined, per tree or by the size of the tree, or?
It's square footage.
Square footage.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you determine, like, if you have a, a oak tree this big, how do you determine a square footage of it? Do you do anything by the height of it, or?
It's really, if you're, if they've cut it down and removed the stump, it's the area of disturbance that they've disturbed.
Okay.
Deborah, question, Commissioner?
I, I don't have a question, Mr. President, in fact, I, uh, wanted to make a motion.
So, I just wanna ask, just for the public, your fees are based on the time involved to process these applications and?
Yes.
We're just not pulling, trying to balance a budget and pulling numbers out of there?
Absolutely not, yeah, we have to pay a consultant to review the tower permits. Um, the critical area ones that we have listed are all come down from the state, those are state requirements, and the ratios that they have to be paid. So no, we're not just raising fees.
So how much is the tower fee now and what is it going to?
So we had it at, we had them flip-flopped. So we had the, um, tower permit, if you just had to submit for a permit and didn't have to go to the Board of Appeals, we had that at sixteen hundred dollars, that should have been nine hundred. It should be sixteen hundred if you're going to the Board of Appeals, because there are additional costs involved with going to the Board of Appeals.
Administrative, yeah.
Exactly.
That makes sense.
And from the work session, I remember, you had to hire a consultant to do additional work so that added to the increased cost.
Right.
I mean, are we having that many towers going up anyway, or?
Um, there's a lot, not necessarily towers, but when they add antennas and, you know, we still have to have it analyzed by the consultant, and we were absorbing those fees, we weren't charging them back to the, the company that was asking for the permit.
Gotcha.
And the whole, and the whole process, when we started this a year or two ago, was so that the citizens weren't subsidizing private industry work.
That's correct.
So we asked you to go through and analyze your fees, what it really cost you, 'cause we didn't want Mr. and Mrs. Smith subsidizing work for a, a commercial project. So that was the whole intent of this process. So today, we're just fixing a couple little errors that were made in that first round.
Right, and things that we just forgot.
Right.
So you can call Mr. and Mrs. Smith and tell them we fixed it, right?
Sure. Did you wanna say anything, Mr. and Mrs.?
Commissioner President, that is exactly what I was gonna say, Markwell County Administrator, that, uh, before, prior to the changes of these fees, the taxpayers are really paying for the cost of staff to work through this, and now those that actually require the permits are paying for the permits.
Right.
Uh, Commissioner Hart, did you have anything?
It's probably gone.
Maybe not, okay. So I have a, a, Commissioner Weems, if you wanna make a motion?
Certainly. I'd like to make a motion to include the recommended fee changes as part of the county commissioners' budget for public comment. Second?
Have a motion and a second that we, uh, adopt the recommended changes to the fee structure. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three oh, thank you, Director.
Thank you very much.
So next on the agenda is public comment, do we have any public comment today?
The floor has been open for public comment, if anyone is on the line and would like to speak, please press star nine. You'll be identified by the last four digits of your phone number.
Caller two eight zero three, we are ready to receive your comments.
Caller, please identify yourself by name and address, and whether you are speaking on behalf of yourself or on behalf of a, of a group.
Hi, good morning, my name's Joseph Cormier, I live in Owens, Maryland, do you need my street address?
No, sir, that's sufficient.
Uh, hi, good morning, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, I just wanna thank you for your, uh, autism proclamation today. Uh, I've been very, uh, involved with, uh, Calvert County Special Education going on six years now. Uh, a hundred years ago, fifty years ago, these are students who would be called unteachable and wouldn't be allowed in public schools. And I know that teachers from, you know, Windy Hello Mentary down to Patuxent High School, they don't need a federal law to tell them that they need to teach these children, they do it because they love it and because they're there to support these children. So anything that you can do as the county commissioners to support the Board of Education and the Department of Special Education to help students with autism and any special needs from five oh fours, IFSPs, IUPs, is very much appreciated, and, uh, the community, uh, supports that very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
There are no other speakers.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is Commissioner Reports, Commissioner McConkey?
Um, I'd just like to say, you know, we lost one of our, um, Calvert County Sheriff Officers this past week and, uh, just sending prayers to, to, uh, his family, uh, for what they're going through. I know, um, they have a GoFundMe page that's raised a lot of money, and they have a, a food chain going on for the family, and, uh, it just really hits close to home, um, you know, so just wanna send my condolences to the family.
Commissioner Weems?
I have nothing to report, sir.
So the only thing I have is the last Saturday, I did attend a, uh, vaccination clinic held at St. Paul's Church in Prince Edward. There was a steady stream of people, and it was, uh, good to see two churches pull together, trying to make sure that every segment of our community gets covered in the vaccination process. So, uh, wanna thank them for their efforts on that. Other than that, I have nothing else. Chair, would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. President, I make a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to general provisions, Article Section three dash three oh five B one I to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of an appointee, employee, or official over whom it has jurisdiction.
Second?
Have motion and a second that we move into executive session discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three oh, thank you, and everyone have a great day.
Thank you.